Call me and have confirmation. But the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start this morning with the board reorganization. We are looking to nominate a new chairman. Nomination.
I would make the motion of the cast unanimous ballot if Adam was the chairman.
I'd second Adam.
There's a motion and a second to cast Adam as the chairman. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, being then motion carries.
Thank you.
The second order of business is to nominate a vice chair. Floor goes nominations. I would like to nominate Ed Brown as vice chair. Oh, yeah, of course you should. Take over, Adam.
You kind of just transitioned in this place.
Your chair better be right.
Oh, look at him.
Sure. Because he's a prime of the Giddles. You want to change your name tags. Better change your name tags.
I'm not Mark.
I'll trade him out.
You got a list here. All right, motion was made by Commissioner Olson to nominate Commissioner Brown for vice chairman. Do we have any further nominations?
Second nomination.
For the second for the nomination, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Commissioner Brown is the vice chair. Okay, from there, we will go to the different portfolios. First, we'll start with the auditor, veteran service officer, emergency management, and human resource coordinator. Do we have a nomination to serve on those portfolios?
Chairman, aye.
Generally, that's the way it's been, yes. If you have a motion that myself should serve on those portfolios, do we have a second to the veterans? We have a second. Any discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, now we'll sit on those. Okay. Next, we have the highway department. Do we have any nominations or replacements, who should sit on the highway department?
I would nominate Adam. To stay there.
Okay. We have one nomination right now, we have it split, Ed's on it as well.
And then I would nominate Ed to retain his position on that.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Second vote, no?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any further nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next, the sheriff, state's department, or state's attorney, excuse me, and county agent. Do we have any nominations to cover those portfolios?
I have all those now. Again, this would be okay with the board, I would like to stay on that if that's all right.
Okay.
I'd nominate Commissioner Frith to retain his position on all of those portfolios.
Nomination. Commissioner Frith, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussions, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Then next, we have buildings and grounds, ITGIS, and the tax director.
I have them, so I would be interested in keeping those.
I move that Commissioner Brown retain those portfolio books.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Commissioner Brown to cover those portfolios. Any further discussions, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, lastly, we have recorder, treasurer, and superintendent of schools.
Who have the...
Give him some work.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to continue to...
I would nominate Lucas for that.
We have a nomination, the second for Commissioner Wakefield for the recorder, treasurer, and superintendent of schools. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There you are. I already took these seconds, I suppose you got those. All right, that takes care of our nomination, thank you. Portfolios are going to sign. All right, approval of minutes.
Any other... What, how do we do the other... Oh, all those, that's a good one.
No, not the next two. Next two.
Yeah, those are at the first of the year, right? That's right. Okay. Approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Either one, doesn't matter. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Approval of bills. Any questions on the bills?
Is it already in?
You're done through the end of the year?
Some will pay the bills, are we on the next meeting?
Yep.
One more chance to sneak them in.
Okay. We can do it.
Do we approve the bills? Do we have a motion to approve the bills, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Any question? Association, county, is that... Any crease to lose or not the same?
Nope, it's the same.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call each.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
We had all the bills and a lot of boards in there, right? Want to cover some, really, the additional.
I joined.
I think all.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah. Well, it was all on the additional bills.
Oh, no.
I have one for the moors, for any moors, it was on the additional.
On the first page of the additional. Yeah, it's all the additional. So are we missing any of them? Okay.
I have one for any moors.
What was that, I figured?
Great. I don't know if it's on that list or not. I didn't see it when I was looking through, I guess.
Okay. Move on to approving the financial reports. Any anything interesting?
No, just a lot of amendments, again, every year.
Is there any discussions on the financials?
Will there be amendments at the next meeting?
No.
Or January?
January.
Tell after that.
Yeah, can we do it after? After the...
Tell the rebalance of it.
Yep.
Will they approve?
Motion to approve the financial reports, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown. Lightfoot.
Aye. Treasurer's checks. Any discussion on that?
Move it.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Any further discussions, seeing none, we'll get a roll call there.
Yep.
We do.
Yep. Olson.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, true.
We have a motion approved, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, no additions, obviously. Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, yeah, the water board is in section today, so they might send it at some point. We can do that over the announcements ended. Okay. Stacy.
Good morning.
You're up, good morning.
We continue to have busy months, we're over 100 people again last month. Things coming up. We've initiated one complaint against a VA doctor. It seems to be a national trend right now, the new secretary of the VA is trying to clean house of bad doctors in the VA system. Nationally, there's upwards of 80,000 doctors that are probably going to get their ax handed to them. We do have complaints in Devils Lake about a doctor at the Fargo VA. And we've initiated, there's an investigation into him, so he'll probably be on that list. We're meeting with Senator Highkamp's people next week in Grafton, a roundtable on VA problems. And that topic will come up again. Other than that, that's about all I have, I guess. Stay very busy, it's, we're still seeing over 100, averaging over 100 people a month.
Yeah, we have a busy month, yeah.
Stacy, what are the main complaints about the doctors?
This particular doctor told one of our veterans here in Devils Lake that his pain was in his head. And he was seeing an arthritis doctor. Well, ultimately, he went to Sanford, got another opinion, and here he had a ongoing problem with an issue called ankle osteospondinitis, which had been there for approximately 18 years. And it's our contention that you don't miss that over an 18-year period. And it did take the doctor at Sanford 10 minutes to find it.
Was it the same doctor that he was seeing over that 18-year period?
No, this doctor, we were trying to initiate a disability claim, and the doctor at the VA told him that pain is in his head, he has no pain. He didn't want to see him anymore. And so it's things like that that I wouldn't say are typical, but we do run into a doctor every now and then that probably shouldn't be there.
Are there other complaints following them?
Oh, yeah, following up yesterday, there's a total of three in Devils Lake that have got the same story from him, that the pain is in your head.
What was the figure, did you use 80,000?
80,000, I believe, that was on an interview last week on CNN. And then in USA Today, yes, this week, USA Today had an article regarding a VA doctor that got ousted out of the state of Wyoming, moved to Iowa, and still continues to do surgery, and causes a lot of, well, it'd be a malpractice situation, but because he's working for the government, it doesn't go that rough. And now the state of Iowa has to deal with that particular doctor. And he still causes, I mean, his surgeries are causing paralysis and infections and issues that... And that's probably one of the worst-case scenarios, when you start passing them from state to state. It'll be something to be, it'll be newsworthy for the next few months, we'll have to keep an eye on.
Any further questions for Stacy? Seeing none, thanks Stacy.
Just that one question on the contract. Oh, this looks in order, Stacy, the contract to the county, the three counties?
I haven't looked at it, but yet if it's similar to what we did last year, no change.
Same thing.
Yep. Yep.
You don't think we'll see any problems with that?
Actually, if Nelson hasn't brought up any issues, we should be good, because I know Benson is very satisfied, it'll be things going.
They want to hear something from Nelson, or?
I won't say nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, thanks Stacy. You're up, good morning.
I asked Alan McKee to be here this morning also. We'll start out with Nelson Hampden, that went through the last foreclosure sale. A couple of months ago, we were up in that area assessing, we actually don't do the assessing in Hampden, but still drive through. And again, I knew that Ramsey County had acquired this, so we took some pictures, the doors were open. So we went in and checked it out. When I came back, I had Kevin, I gave him some locks, and one of his employees went up when they were going out there and locked it up, since it was in Ramsey County's name. I, it went through the foreclosure sale, didn't sell. Candy contacted me and asked me if I would check into it a little bit more about what is going on with it, because Hampden, of course, would prefer to have it removed. I had come to note that it hadn't been lived in back in 2005, so it's probably been not lived in for quite a while. I did a couple inside pictures, too. I spoke with the mayor, I've spoken with him a couple times, he lives next door. And they might remove. The problem is, is they've removed quite a few, and two things, one is cost. They're smaller towns, it's, they just don't have a lot of money to do it. The other thing is, he said, you know, he kind of said that the average age in Hampden now is over 60, and that's including their department and that kind of thing. So it's a lot. The home is pretty, is fairly close to two other homes, so he felt burning it. It would need, since it's such a big home, he said if it was smaller, it'd be easier for them, but it would need, you know, a pretty big hole to be burnt in, that kind of thing. So they can't take care of it, it seems. I asked Al to come to just give advice on what the county can and can't do, because it is one's property now, and go from there.
What are we looking at, the basement?
That's removed, it was a porch that was moved off, and they dug out part of the basement.
There is a basement under there.
There is for part of it, yeah. That's what, that's the front of the house when you drive on the road.
Who's the mayor?
Donald Steves.
Pardon?
Donald Steves.
Kevin, would you have any idea what would you do?
So you'd base it there, Alan, I guess. Our backdoor's not big enough to do it. If we were going to do it, we'd have to rent something. I think by the time we do that, it'd be cheaper to find somebody that's up for work. Yeah, I'm sure there's somebody around now.
One thing I noticed, too, is in regard to this, is, you know, nobody really knows what to do for sure. If maybe there was a policy in line, because there's more homes like this that are going to come up.
There are more.
I mean, they're not right now, because they're in Internet buyer's hands, but sooner or later, they'll probably end up... Well, some of the towns still can, and depending on the house, they can take care of it, but...
And then I think that, you know, your suggestion is really reasonable, especially because we have an aging rural population, and a lot of these houses are going to end up being vacant, and that's just the way of things. And so if we had a way to sort of plan out and space out if the county is going to choose to tear down and do removal and all of that, that we can space out the cost of doing so, so that it's not five homes one year, two homes the next, you know, we could be a little bit more practical and regimented about it, if that's the way that the county chooses to handle it.
Elizabeth, did you say that it's probably not practical to burn up there?
He didn't feel like it, just because there was a couple homes nearby.
I would suggest we take bids on hiring somebody to do it. Very elegant.
First consideration before you go too far is, now, it's yours. Before you do anything, you have to have an inspector for asbestos, that's a state law. One item in getting this planned together, I agree, you should have some kind of policy at the county level on how to deal with these, to kind of circumvent some of this stuff, like asbestos. Asbestos review is very expensive. Now, if the owner or somebody bought this for a dollar and had you tear it down, or in this case, you can't burn it, but had you to tear it down, they would not, a private person does not need an asbestos review for one house. If more than one, yes. But, so it's something you got to look forward to when you start seeing this. If you can deal with the owner that's there, or the neighbors, maybe the neighbors want to split the lot or something in these little towns, you almost, it's a good deal, other counties have done this to avoid the cost. Get the neighbors to buy it and have them tear it down, okay? They've also, when it's in this kind of shape, they have to put them up for sale. But when they're in this bad a shape, and they put them up for sale, they put a real high price on them, so that these Internet people and others that buy these and are going to make a castle out of them, but they just keep going around and around and around, nothing gets done. So that's a consideration, to talk to the neighbors and the town first, see if they can't come together, maybe a couple people or somebody that's interested in the lot, and give them a good deal to take care of it. Give them a period of time, whether it's three months, or six months, or a year. We'll give you a year to take care of this, whether you want to improve it or take it down. Something like that, if you have a policy upfront, you could avoid some of these costs to the county itself. Other counties have done this, and they've been pretty successful. They still end up knocking a few down themselves with their own equipment, but, or having to hire it. But once it comes into the government hands, then you have to have an asbestos review. In looking at this house, I would, there may not be any asbestos in it, but you still have to pay the guy to come and look. Normally, there's, where you'd find it in a residential house, is a sheet right behind the electrical panel, or in the flooring, or possibly in the plaster walls. So it's just, on commercial, you can't get around it. If it's a commercial building, you have to have an asbestos review before you either burn it or tear it down.
So you thought there were neighbors that were interested in the property?
No, what they would be interested in is lots, but not for very, I mean, not
No.
$800 or less, yeah.
They would be interested.
Yeah.
Well, what are the taxes, do you remember, Candy dropped?
It wasn't very much.
It was like $600 or something like that.
Fourteen?
Yeah, it wasn't much.
I think it was like $1800 value on it.
You got $1800.
Maybe, I'd have shared a lot. No, on the
On the whole. So
And actually, it would be general jams with the assessor, but...
So if we, under the premise that you can sell it back to them for a dollar, then they would have to pay to do the removal then? We couldn't cut a deal where we
They could, or you could make some kind of
Did we cut a deal with them, where we pay it for a buck, and then we tear it down, and we buy it and we tear it down?
And then they would make the deal with, with your president, would
And since they technically own the house, then we can forego doing asbestos.
You know, if, once the, once the government knows that you have to have asbestos. Not that that's bad, I mean, it protects people, but...
So at this point, we couldn't sell it for a dollar?
Well, I'm sure you could.
We could sell it for the taxes.
Yeah, or taxes. Or a dollar. I mean, normally what happens here is you sell it to the city for a dollar. The reason that it's not going to work here is they have no money to tear it down. Okay?
Well, right, but I think we were already discussing the fact that we would be responsible for tearing it down, but it's just if we can avoid unnecessary costs.
If we gave it to the city or sold it back to the city...
It's still the same thing, there are government entities, it has to be a private person. Okay?
What are the taxes?
Taxes are, was it 560 that was owed on it for back taxes? Taxes are like $114.
$114?
Yeah, we have it for like 550. It's the 9996, right? Of course. Yes, yeah.
What was the cost of running out of paper? Let somebody add it for the taxes. Advertise for somebody, we're looking for somebody to pay for the taxes.
For the 550?
$114, don't you say?
No, that's what we dealt with, because this stuff averaged in the paper already.
I thought you said $114.
No, that's a year.
A year.
Yeah, a three years.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, and under central code, we don't have the option to waive the taxes. We have to at least collect taxes.
But see, if the city bought it and paid for it, they'd still get those back. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's
Yeah, I don't think they're concerned with the taxes, but the cost.
Oh. Oh.
And the fact that they're, because they're governmental entity, they still have to do asbestos.
So it just adds cost.
I mean, just so that I understand the nuances of this, right? Like, we could, we could have Kevin be like the largest landowner in Ramsey County, and we just pass him houses. Sell them and then
You know, it would, it would be better if, like the mayor himself, or a neighbor, bought it for whatever. I didn't know you had to, because I know they've sold properties to cities for a dollar. I mean, they don't always get the tax back, I know that for a fact. I've dealt with these for 30 years. And so usually the cities get caught with this. And the cost to tear them down, haul them out, because a lot of times you can't burn them right there, you have to haul them someplace else, and sometimes they burn them, sometimes they just bury them, but it just depends on the situation. But the thing to do here would be, maybe not for this one, is sit down and get a policy in place on how to handle this from the get-go, once they become dilapidated. Once you, if you have a decent house that you can actually sell to somebody, then it's a little easier. This, I mean, you know, it's
Well, I think we all see that.
Yeah, yeah.
We can all see that.
Right.
It's not a decent house.
Exactly.
And what would you guess would cost to get out of there? You'd guess?
Probably $10,000 with asbestos and everything.
That's what would it cost to take this one down in town?
I think this one was 16, yeah. And all the way.
Yeah, this one is a little smaller, but all the way.
And they fill the hole, too.
And since Hampden is now incorporated, right?
Oh, they are.
Yeah.
Oh, they are? Definitely a safety issue. Should come back to us.
Well, yeah.
Well, that's my
Totally agree.
I'd still make the motion that we advertise and demolish that house. We would.
Okay. We have a motion to advertise the demolition of the house in Hampden, we have a second.
Well, so are we going to have an asbestos inspection first?
We have to.
I can give you a list.
Look at the safety issue.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't need to go any farther than that.
So I don't, I don't mean to be riding a dead horse into the ground here, but I am a little bit curious. Is there some way that the county could set up a shell entity, like a holding company, where all of the property that the county ends up owning would actually be owned by a holding company, and then therefore would not be owned by a governmental entity?
You'd have to ask your attorney. I'm not that good. I'm not sure. What, now, like, you can talk to, the closest county that does this is Toward. They, they've done this for a while, and it's worked fairly well for them, so you could ask them about the details, how they, how they do that. But what you, what takes place is you have to have them deal with the owner, if you possibly can, if they're in Timbuktu. You know, they want to get out from under. If you say you're going to tear it down from, usually
Regional owner, they're not paying the taxes.
Right, right, so it goes on to the property, and you lose that money anyway, you end up paying it, okay? But if he's still the owner, he can, he can either, if it's possible to burn it down, he can say yes, or he can have Kevin or what, some private entity tear it down.
Essentially, we, essentially, we have two options at this point. We can either just tear it down ourselves and just bite the cost of the remediation, and then they'll look at for the asbestos, or we can approach the neighbors in Hampden and see if we can sell it to them for the 550 with the express consent, that we will tear it down, so they'll get a clean lot for 550. And then once they own it, then we don't have to do the asbestos.
True.
Those are, I think, our two best actions at this point.
Do that first, before we, before we tear it down.
It's up to you, there's a motion.
That would probably cut the cost of that. Just talking out loud.
What, what, what did our asbestos remediate, or just looking at it cost, on the other one?
I don't know. The closest one, Grand Forks, I, I'll give you a list, I'll bring the list on to the auditor.
Yeah.
This one over here, even kind of
Yeah. Yeah, we actually had to remediate some there, too. Because it was tiles.
They paid for the inspection, and they paid for the removal, and then destruction after that.
Because wasn't the asbestos part like six, five, six thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very expensive.
What are the wishes?
I'll hold my motion up.
We have a motion pulled off the table? What are the wishes of the commission?
Let's see, we'll put in charge contacts in the, uh, neighbors.
I was gonna say, Beth has already talked with them.
What kind of report did you have with the mayor?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to ask him if he wanted to purchase it for the taxes due, he could, can keep the land and the county would remove the house and fill the hole.
Do you think this is all legal law, are you dancing all the taxes?
That's a very good question.
Oh, should I ask, I can ask Carrie first.
Yeah, we could talk to Carrie, we could table it for me, you can talk to Carrie, make sure everything that we're doing is correct. You know, I wanna make sure we're doing it right too.
In the meantime, should we, should we put up some sort of fence around that opening in the, in the ground there? So kids aren't crawling in there and getting, I don't know.
Should I have been like that for
Yeah, I've got, yes.
We can even have a sixty-year-old kid get in there and he's probably in trouble.
But I get what you're saying.
Had something like that, Kevin, to fill it, like orange fence or something?
Well, your poster, I should be able to.
But I think we still have to go forward.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, at least put some feelers out there and see if they're even interested and then we'll know where we're at. And if they say, no, we don't really care at all, then we know where we're at. Is the reason that they can't burn any places, it doesn't look like the houses are that close, is there another fire department that have better equipment?
Right, I was gonna mention that, you know, that may be something that somebody else would wanna look at. I know you did mention their fire department, um, is there for emergencies, but
It's more like a quick response unit that they have on Hammond, it's not a full-fledged fire department.
They might not be comfortable doing something, but
The real might go up there and do it.
I was gonna say, I was talking
You could talk to, yeah, you could talk to Corey or Sean or something.
I mean, that might be another option to avoid some costs. Plus, you know, maybe they could do a little training on it or something.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Maybe.
About firefighters. Okay. What's the county owning it, can they, if they're gonna burn it, they still have to do this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's even worse.
All right, cause it floats up as well.
You know, yeah, it floats up in there.
Do, do, do we wanna make a motion on that, that we're gonna allow Beth to put some feelers out there or are we just gonna let her go?
Let's just leave it till Let's let her go. Tax, as part of tax work, right?
Sure.
Duties as a sign. Okay, anything else, Beth?
Yes, I do a couple more things, um, the second one's quick, I just wanted to let you know that on Friday we mailed three hundred and twenty-three applications for the farm residence exemption again. Uh, yearly activities, so they're all, in case you hear it, we've already had some, uh, return, hopefully it'll be smooth and painless and, yeah. And then the last thing is, um, a while back, Commissioner Brown was in and we were talking about where it kinda started, we were talking about the, um, large new joint elevator will, um, lose its exemption in two thousand nineteen. It'll have, have gone through its five years. So a value will need to be placed, and we were just talking about our office putting it on or what else was out there for options and that type of thing. What we talked about, and I said, I just get the, um, what it would cost to do this and just start talking about it in case it was something that would we wanted to have done is to have a commercial revaluation of the properties in Ramsey County. With that, I just looked at actual commercial properties. Commercial covers a lot of different things, but this is my business, so urban commercial and rural commercial, so businesses. Um, and that was what it was. So what, um, I did was I kinda came up with what I was looking at and then it had Steve map it for me. So these are kind of where everything I found that maybe could be part of this would be located. And as you scroll in it, um I'm also
Joint Elevator Cell.
Wait, oh, yeah. Is that, is that it right there?
You're right there.
Or now I'm going up the lot?
Gonna get Bartlet, Bartlet.
Yeah, go further, shout out.
Bartlet.
Okay. It's not the, we're at the edge. Hang on, let me just pull up. That's, that'll be it there, right?
It'll be right though in the southeast corner there.
You can turn on the highways and stuff as well.
The little dots should be coming up, cause let's stop there. This is it, right here.
That's two four zone, two four zone, that's a desert. That's actually
I think that a desert is just not, I think that's just not recalculating that stuff, cause there's nothing Yeah, this is joint, I don't know why it says a desert on top of it right now. But you can have it still in.
That's just covering, I believe.
So, you know, and then so the dots break down, and this is an example of, okay, so, um, this is, passes out like a proposal of what they do. I contacted Ben Art Appraisal, which is, um, our software provider. They've also done more than fifty reappraisals in the state. They're very reputable and that is the procedure and what they give you for, um, the cost. It's a per parcel cost, so I don't have an exact figure right now because I'm trying to figure out how many parcels. Um, what I was at, was around ninety thousand dollars, puts your budget over X amount of years. However, upon, if you look at this in joint, I realized that there's a lot of, um, properties like this in the county where that could be combined into one, you know, maybe two, cause they're on different sides of the road, but it's all owned by the same owner. And I had Steve, um, I gave him some ones that I was looking at and then he took and did name matches to make sure that they were in the same name. And I have at least like thirty combinations, you know, more than thirty, but they end up being like thirty down to thirty. So I'm trying to condense the amount. Uh, I also spoke with Gary Martinson last week and, um, it may be something too that now that if they were going to come, the city would have some work that they would want done, it might not be commercial, but they have some other things that he was going to talk to them about. Uh, the thing about the commercial is there is a possibility of, you know, pretty quick, it's probably about forty million dollars worth of property. Um, you know, you're gonna get quite a bit, you can get quite a bit of value fairly quickly if, if value is low. Um, they put all this into our commercial module, nothing is in right now. Everything has been valued well, but by whomever worked in the office, however, it was done and, and its records kept that way. And it can continue to do that. Um, but this would be certified appraisers that come in in the summer of two thousand nineteen. Uh, they have an eighty percent that they have to get into the property, they, they guarantee they'll do, get into at least eighty percent of the properties. And, um, put values on all of them, also represent themselves at a meeting with us, you know, like their township meeting type of thing. Um, and they do this, uh, kind of all over the state now. And it's, you know, commercial, this goes from marinas to gas stations to grain elevators to, you know, just such a large array of the different types of properties.
You're talking about doing a whole colony, right?
Yeah, it'd be the whole county of urban and rural commercial.
Excluding Devil's Lake.
Excluding Devil's Lake. Um, you know, and it's the same value for par- parcel, whether it's the farm, stock, weather, or it's wood limit or you know, it's something, it works out and wash, you know, they don't give you lower value, this and that, so which they do, or if it's the grain elevator joint, they'll charge the same as for, uh, building any anymore.
When was the last time this was done?
This has never been done.
What do you think the cost?
I, I think it'd probably be around ninety thousand dollars, um, if we budget over two years, so nineteen and twenty. Uh, I would, somewhat, I feel that we'd probably gain, um, commercial value that would in, uh, in twenty years. What it is, is it's not just the revaluation that's good about it, if it was to happen, it's now we have the records and now we can maintain them and now we can continue on working, you know, in the same manner, in the software, doing everything the same in the future.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
And you don't have to decide today, obviously.
They kinda figured out the figure out yet?
Yes, they, yeah, they did, uh, it was just me, they kept, what it is, it's about four hundred and fifty-five dollars a parcel that had destruction on it. So I'm, you know, just thinking that kind of is common.
When do we need to commit to this?
Um, we would, should do it earlier this year to get on the schedule because they're backed out two years. But once they give us a contract, we have ninety days to sign it.
Yeah, there are other counties that, a lot of other counties that have done this, I was just actually reading, I couldn't remember which county it was.
Well, I, you know, I, this is not fact, but I'm pretty sure, it was before we started talking about this, a gentleman from Cavalier came up in that was maybe a past commissioner that he was on the township board, and Cavalier was doing like all of their county residential, commercial, but charging townships. And that's why he was in, cause he wanted to know more about our program and what we were doing here.
It was probably Flanders or Richard Flanders.
Yeah, that sounds right. And I think that was how they were handling it.
Well, it's never been done, so it's pretty much a normal rain, or we should do it.
Yeah, it's really, you know, we, you use values for comps and things, and houses and stuff, but who knows what an elevator's worth?
And, and that's just it.
That's why you need to have somebody that comes in that has expertise.
Yes, and two other things to with that is, is one, obviously the cost of construction is not the market value of it. And then the real, the difference in real estate and personal property and commercial is so great. I mean, you can have two bins, I've found, standing next to each other, and one's real estate and one's personal property. And we don't value personal property, so there's a lot of expertise that they So what they would do if we did commit to this, they would send, um, one of their certified appraisers here next summer when they come through to do another county and do the joint elevator. So then we could have that ready for the two thousand, or for the two thousand nineteen. And then in the ne- next summer, they would do all of them and put them on.
Have you thought about, Beth, on how we're gonna spring this on the, uh, commercial property owners?
Not yet, no, I just was giving to you guys first.
I would suggest to you, probably a plan.
Yeah. For some, it, you know, there's some that might go down, I, you know
Yeah, I agree with you, you know, I, I would think it's Uh, it's, it's a good idea, I think we should definitely do it. How soon do you want us to commit to it?
Um, I, I guess, I suppose within the next two, three months or something like that. Just to get a contract on, like I said, it's ninety days after that that we have, but just to make sure they put us on.
I think we would probably put all the commissioners at ease if we heard the plan and all we're gonna put the commercial owners.
Yeah. How well make some phone calls to see what they've done at other counties too.
Yeah. I think that would be a clue to them that, or show them that, I guess, that other counties are doing this and it'd be a lot better to do it this way than have the state give the idea and do it like they do front land and, uh, other properties, you know, putting it in say it's gonna be this, you know, you gotta be within this all.
Right.
So, uh, I, I would think this would be a lot better for them, so.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Anything else, Beth?
No, that's it all, that's your, that.
Bring it, bring it back.
Bring it back, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Yeah.
We're on to Kristen.
Mine's short and sweet compared to that, so
Okay.
Uh, just a couple things, I'm working, um, with the, you know, the Puerto Rican Emergency Management Association on our conference. So there's been a lot of work put into that. Um, I'm also working alongside Enbridge to do an exercise here at the end of, um, January, beginning in February. Um, we have some more planning meetings this week, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and also, we are planning to do, well, I am planning to do, and I've talked to Steve about it and I've talked to, um, police chief to do an active shooter drill in the courthouse in January as well. And that date is to be announced, to be determined if I've been said yet. Um, we had a fire drill, uh, three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and that went good. Um, happened, we had a really nice day to go up for a winter fire drill, so that was nice. Um, yeah, that's, that's really it, otherwise, day to day, um, grand difficult work. To missions to the state from their requests, um, other than that, nothing too, too big or too pressing.
Okay.
Unless anyone has any for me?
Any questions?
No?
I was shorts, I was shorts.
I told you, it was short and sweet.
Okay, then we will go to Katie. There, there.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I have a scanning proposal for my next set of books, which would be my Miss Laney's book, there's thirty-five of them. This is a proposal from US Imaging. Um, it's for just under eleven thousand dollars. This would be paid for out of the Preservation Fund, which is currently ripe at about fifty thousand dollars, so plenty of money to get it done. My dad emailed them and asked them a timeframe for this and they thought they could come and do the scanning probably February or March and hopefully have the project completed by June. So it would be for next year, um, twenty eighteen. And then, once we get this project done, all I have left is my mortgage books. That is a large set of books though, so I think I'm gonna have to let that Preservation Fund, um, build up before I do that. But once this project is finished, I will get a proposal on that, just so I have an idea of where I'm at. And then all of my books in my office would be digitized, which would make me very happy, so. Um, I'm just looking for approval for this for a project that, just under eleven thousand.
And you already budgeted for it?
Yes, I have three thousand budgeted out, it comes up again for next year.
What would the figure on this cost? Ten thousand eight twenty-two forty-four. Who to approve?
Motion to approve, and we have a second to approve the scanning project of the Recorder's Office. Um, being we're not paying, we'll just, uh, vote, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Vote the same side. Motion carries. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay. We're up to Kevin. And he already owns it, he's already doing stuff.
First time I had, uh, wanted to go over next year's paving project, just so everybody's on the same page and aware of what we're doing. Got this highlighted on the parcel viewer. Uh, we're doing, uh, some leftover lays on military road. Uh, this is Ramsey County one, all of that. And that's part of our federal aid project, so we'll be using our federal aid money for those two stretches of road. And also on there will be Walley Drive. And the city limits goes to about right there. So I talked to the city and they're willing to pay their share of, from here to here. Just so you're aware of that. And then the last stretch is where probably be a little discussion on this piece. There's a little piece of gravel right here between the railroad tracks or the state finish. This is the truck road. This is the terminal road that goes by the elevator. So we wanna do that, just cause it's a maintenance nightmare for us. So just so everybody's aware that that little piece is gonna be built also. And then down here, we're, we're working with the state. This, this is a railroad track right here. So we're trying to do this no matter what, that's part of that project. But the state, two thousand nineteen, we're doing ours next year in two thousand eighteen. Two thousand nineteen, the state is gonna come through. And we've talked to them about doing their share here and they agreed to do this. But now we've got this section, this is a railroad right away in here. So we've got this section here to deal with. And I had Paul put some numbers together for what we thought that whole stretch, this stretch would cost. And it's roughly, what, fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
We need, uh, we'd have to get railroad insurance, that's twenty-five hundred dollars, that's part of the fifteen hundred, or fifteen thousand, but and I am gonna send, before we do this piece, I'm gonna send an email to the railroad to see if they're willing to help pay for that. My main question is, is do we wanna go ahead and do that section of load that?
What section is it all getting filled?
Hey, here's the boundary line, this is a railroad, this is a railroad track, so they own all this. This is the gravel part of terminal road. Just this section through here, and that's where it's the worst, it's part of broken up and pot void and that kinda stuff.
What is it, a hundred, double hundred feet?
Yeah.
Roughly?
Yeah, I would say.
And there's about a.
Yeah, roughly two hundred feet and then there's a dig out in there, look where they, they passed it with some laylay hot mix on top of it, it looks, looks pretty rough. But that's about twenty-six, what, wide by eighty feet long, they have to leave it completely. That's why it costs us that much, but that was ten thousand over fifteen.
Did you say if you talked to the railroad or not?
I haven't checked, no.
What reception do you think you'll get?
Probably not good. Typically that's the way that goes, but at the same time, you can see where they've done most of that damage by coming off their access road and turning onto that approach. That's where all that damage occurred. But, uh, you know, I don't know how receptive they're gonna be to doing that. They actually own the land.
What do you think?
Yeah, it's, good, uh, you know, obviously, I'm, you know, the short tack, it gets pretty heavy truck traffic, 'cause anybody coming from the east, that's where they turn and go to the terminal there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, it's basically that. And they, they've done some work over the years, so it'll be smoothed it out, but it's still pretty rough.
That's the worst hundred feet of pavement, it's pretty, it's pretty bad. First it's a hole, then it's a bump, then it's a hole again.
What do you think Paul, we gotta do is prove it, quality of pavement we're gonna have there.
Well.
Take some of the subsoil out?
Yeah, I guess we estimate sixteen inch.
Sixteen?
And then the fabric down, twelve inches gravel, four inch hot mix, and then we'll lay the whole thing with another, you should have two inches.
You think sixteen dollars enough?
Since we're putting fabric in.
Fabric is take care of on the last one.
That's what we look pretty much anywhere else, and then you want five and a half inches of pavement, which is on the state highways.
The drainage is pretty good there, it's not as flat.
Was it right on the south side there that they put, they dug a water line under? Where did it, where did it go?
They'd bored that.
They bored it, but they came out on the north side, right?
Yeah, they dug a hole right here and they dug a hole.
They bored it all the way under there.
Yeah, it's on the west side of the interchange. Yeah, it was underneath here, but it was all, it was all bored, so.
That was the one going to Langdon, that right?
Yep. Well, this one, this service that city's new.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's for the industrial part.
They didn't blow that way Langdon?
The one for Langdon, the one that goes up to east side of twenty there.
Right by the.
Oh, well.
Yep, and runs right on the east side of twenty and then it turns it, goes over again.
This just serves as the, uh, new annexation. But this, this is a friendly road, there's a lot of railroad traffic that comes down this road. And then makes this turn, that's the only way they can go, is to make this turn. You can see that's where a lot of that damage came from.
Cause they haul a lot of equipment in there, cause they, they're doing some kind of major repair or additions or.
And it's a stockpile site for them, so they stockpiled in there and then hauled back out.
But that's where they kinda headquartered out of there, they bring equipment in and out and products, yeah.
But since we were doing this project, I thought it would probably be a good time to do it, it may never, ever get done if we didn't do it.
Good luck with the railroads.
Yeah. So, with your blessing, I guess we'll put that into our plan, just hoping to get some money back from the railroad. The state did agree to do their part, but it's not getting done for a year later, so I don't know. That's probably the way they will handle that. There's gonna be a cold joint there, but I think they'll be fine. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, every place also we've done that, we just tapered down on that little pavement and matched the taper.
We do it all the time, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So I don't know if we need a motion or not, but just so everybody's on the same page, if that's what we're gonna be doing, if somebody asks or. We'll, we'll have to make motions, advertise, and no motions except the bid, so that'll all be part of that, but. When we set our bid specs together, that'll be included then.
I would guess the railroad will be a while to put it back together?
Yeah, yeah. I, in fact, I haven't even, I just got these numbers, so I'm just gonna email them these numbers and see what they come up with.
Nobody local with that good?
I'm gonna start with our state, Rep. Work, probably our best chance.
Okay.
Any more questions on that?
Any questions for the discussion? Okay.
Okay, and John Deere is also renting tractors against this this year on their governor program, that's the same as last year. And the costs are gonna be the same also, they just renewed their contract. So it's thirty-eight, thirty-seven, fifty for each tractor. And we usually get two.
Are you saying whatever it was?
Exactly the same.
Move this one.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve, uh, lease agreements or the cost, I guess. We have to send lease agreements now, is that what we're approving?
We have to let them know that we want them to start building them.
So we're approving leasing tractors from John Deere for use next year. Motion is second, it's been made, we have discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
And that thing I couldn't remember at the last meeting was those railroad crossing arms and flashing lights are up, just west of Grand Arbor now. So that was up two weeks ago, just for information, for the railroad. And the last thing I, I was, uh, the payment on our two new mowers, I just got that yesterday, but it's the Butler in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven thirty-four, twelve cents.
That's the both?
No.
That's the both.
Both of them?
Yep.
Okay, so we need a motion. I'm undertaking a motion to approve the build of Butler.
So go move.
Six and five, pick. Go ahead, Mark. We have a motion, second, we'll give it to Lucas.
Okay.
Sure, we have a second from Lucas. Uh, discussion, seeing none, roll call please.
Chris?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Greatfield?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Just one comment about the blading that we did last week, that was very beneficial. Townships, I'm sure, called, requested.
They did request that. The weather was right.
Yeah, it really was, really. I mean, the township roads are gonna be tough to handle when they got bladed.
They always are.
We had a chance in the weather, and we did a very good job that they called us.
All right, I don't know that.
Did you get everything or just certain ones?
Just certain ones that were that new gravel that got put on last summer?
Oh, they were the worst? Yeah, some were getting pretty, pretty humped in the middle and then you'll kick the gravel into the ditch.
There's a lot of those got a little bit from that township roads this fall, you know, and it closed up right away. Here it got cold and didn't have a chance of getting bladed, but I warmed up to that. It's much more tolerable now, so.
Okay, anything else for now? Okay, very good, thank you. Any unfinished business? We have nothing under here. New business, uh, we have lease approvals with, well, we'll take them one at a time here. Uh, since it's first on the list, the Dells Lake, uh, joint basin for.
David Rochester?
Yep.
Google it please.
Okay. Change of the date. We have a motion to approve, uh, the lease with the Dells Lake Basin, joint basin, we have a second. Sorry, we have a second.
Yep.
Yep. Basically what it is, is a, you know, our monthly rent for the space in the building and then the auditor's office payroll handles our, our payroll for us and our payment to North Dakota crews for our insurance. And we make sure that we get that, check for that on a timely basis. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, approve the lease, vote by saying aye.
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 Vote the same sign.
Sorry, I missed the first one.
It's pretty quiet.
Yeah, it's still quiet, but it did still pass, we're going with it. Okay. Uh, approval of the lease of the Dells Lake Park Ward for use of the mo- a mortgage building.
Move it through.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Same thing, man?
Yes.
When's the last time, I mean, it doesn't make, necessarily make sense to move the dollars around because, I mean, it's all kind of from the same place, all taxpayers, but when's the last time that, uh, dollar figure was changed on any of the leases?
Never.
Just out of curiosity sake.
I would guess.
I was gonna ask that same question, I mean, our costs continue to rise.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all from taxpayers, but it's from different taxpayers. So, I mean, it, it only makes sense that we should have, I mean, we don't wanna be high, but we should be fair.
Let's see all the, let's see all the whole.
Well, and they, you know, and they do too, they know that, you know, if something else, like a larger event gets worked in there, they get pumped up.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, any more discussion on the park ward lease? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, lease for, with the school district. Now, the motion to approve a lease with the school district, we have a second. Sorry, second, I should suspect to the Dells Lake School District. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. And finally, the sheriff's house. Shouldn't get one either, was that one in there?
We don't even give them.
Yeah, well, I don't remember reading that one last time.
Okay, there's a lease for that?
It's just an agreement with the nonprofit, I believe, is then, just saying then, you know.
On motion or?
Do you have, do you have one around, or do you have the?
I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's fine. We couldn't, uh, why don't we, why don't?
Yes, so.
Well, you could go right, we're quick, we gotta agree then. I don't wanna make any, do anything while she's gone, I wish. What's going on?
What did you do?
Yeah, and all the business now. Well, that would be the sole one.
Yeah, this one's printed.
No, oh, it's printing right now? Okay, well, let's move on to the next one then. And we'll come back. Uh, approve the joint powers agreement for the veteran service officer.
So.
We have a motion to approve it, we have a second, we have a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Vote the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll come back to the sheriff's house. Um, do we wanna see if, uh, the water board is available now or should we, would you guys like to move on and finish up what we had there before?
Doesn't matter.
Well, since we got a little bit of time, why don't we, why don't we see the water boards and then we'll see if we can run up. Take it, Kevin. Okay, and then we'll see if there's any allegations. Roll one. All of yours, okay?
Do we have lease agreements with the other entities within the courthouse that are not technically coming? Well, like, you know, like, uh, Ramsey County Water Board or, um, abstract office or district health.
Abstract contract, right?
Abstract just pays rent.
Yeah, maybe that.
We should probably formalize the contract.
We addressed that contract three, four years ago.
It's not on an annual basis like.
Yeah, it must've been before I got out, so they don't all do it.
You know, it wasn't, it was, we light up, they raised it in that time. The graphic county water board, I'm sure, is just continuing it over the graphic county commission, so.
True.
You know, and I guess.
Yeah, abstract got renewed when they, when that part of Lisa's office.
You know why?
When they expanded there. Yeah, that's when that got my.
You know, I don't, I don't know where I was, but I know.
What do we got, Kevin?
Yeah, we make a motion and then deal with it.
Okay, very good. Perfect timing.
Who is the nonprofit?
Um, Mary Lundy.
They've got, they've got a board.
But she's, she's the chair of the board.
Her husband didn't wanna do it.
To approve the lease agreement with the sheriff's house.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, but it's, I'm just, I'm just looking at it here. Oh, Sheriff's House Committee, okay, I was just looking to see what's in technical titles. Okay, do we have any further discussion on the lease agreement with the Sheriff's House Committee? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Should we wait for the wire?
I have one thing to add.
We have, Kevin's got the one.
All right. On that, uh, with, uh, while I drive, we have eighty-five thousand dollars left for, from our, uh, oil impact money. And we're gonna put that towards the while I drive section. It's good down there.
It's very hard to approve.
Improve, improve something like the base or no?
No, just the, the leftover, it's in actually in pretty good shape, it's just twenty years since it's been, but just to point that out, there's eighty-five thousand dollars left there.
We can't really use it anywhere else.
We could, but.
I mean, for, we gotta use it for David.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a small piece, eighty-five thousand is a lot.
What did we do on our side, Cobra or?
Uh, we're still, I finally got hold of the contractor, they overbuilt, they built us twice for some of that asphalt, so I had him, uh, change their bill. So now he's, I talked to him yesterday, he's mailed us a new invoice. So as soon as we get that, I don't know.
And those approaches on the west side?
Yep, I told, made him wear that and I didn't tell him if they probably owed money, but that's up to the township, so.
Sure.
It's just a double billing, plenty of money?
Yeah, it was like a hundred and fifty tons at eighty bucks.
Well, yeah, that's not enough.
Yeah.
Will they have a excuse or?
Uh, really, see, when they did the digouts, they figured two and a half inches going into those digouts. So whatever asphalt went into those digouts was paid out through the digouts. Well, they billed us for the overlay and the digouts through the asphalt. So a double up there.
I'll remember that.
Okay, Jim. New chairman?
I am.
Boy.
That's great.
Good morning. Um, we've had some big projects. Uh, we've done extensive cleaning on the Hammer Sullivan drain. Uh, after the harvest was completed, we did some spoil leveling with bulldozers on the Hammer Sullivan. As you may or may not know, that drains into, um, Stark with the Cooley, right south and west of Garske, extends all the way up to the county line. Brian Volk, one of our board members, worked extensively with Fish and Wildlife. They were very good to work with, to get that right out there. Um, it's very fair. Landowners are happy and the ditch maintenance was, was very necessary. And the Stark with the Cooley, last year's work started, uh, ended a couple miles north, Highway seventeen, and it goes towards Edmore. Extensive, um, work was needed there and close construction did the work. And, uh, we've, uh, we've paid his bills. We did secure a loan in conjunction with the Cavalier County Water Board. Bruce Gibbons, our attorney, felt that we as a water district had the right to secure our own loans and we'll pay that off over the next couple of years with tax assistance. Extensive work was needed up there and, yeah, you know, ongoing more there. Um, any questions on any of that? Okay, a couple other things, we, some, uh, complaints, two, two complaints that we've been dealing with in the last couple of months. One was when Amtrak was raised going west of Dells Lake. Um, a, a culvert that equalized water on both sides of the railroad was covered up. And the lake was so high that, uh, they said, you know, you, it would be a long time before that's ever needed. Well, the lake is down now. So there was a water complaint stating that water was not being equalized. So, um, Burlington Northern, through their engineer, Louis Rutter, um, they were very good, uh, to work with us and that was completed, um, two, three weeks ago. Dan Webster is our board member from that side. Dan Webster is our board member from that side of the county, and Dan worked, um, and Dan was satisfied. So, that, that is equalized, and that complaint now is resolved. The other complaint dealt with box culverts south of, uh, Webster on Highway Twenty. Uh, a year ago, the board worked with, um, um, we had an assess, uh, we had an easement there. We put in some stoplog structures there, so when the, Edmore Cooley does send to Morrison and comes around there, um, we put stoplogs in there, so they won't back up into the farm line there, east of Highway Twenty, for those of you that drive that road. So, anyway, the box culverts, um, get silt, you know, and cattails, 'cause the flow is very, during the high flow, it flows, but then it's, it's flattened there, it doesn't flow very fast. So, uh, Liam Lawson Jones had filed a complaint saying that the box culverts under the highway are full of, um, debris and silt. So, I met with the DOT, they were very good to work with us, very fair, and, um, uh, they stated that it's not their problem. That because of the stoplog structures, and by the way, the old stoplog structures were put in in the nineteen seventies, as I recall, Jeff, um, but the new ones now, and they said, plus the angle and the low flow and the flatness of the ground, it's not their problem. So, instead of arguing with them, I, um, I asked what, what do they suggest? Well, you gotta get a cable and some kind of a device and hold the debris through. So, then they suggested that perhaps Bobcat had a, a, a load device, it's like a hand-operated, um, loader. Uh, so I called out there, and it was an inch and a half too high to get in there. So, they said, well, maybe call, um, Toro, uh, call Acme Electric, Toro has a device, so I called Toro. Forty-six inches, it just nicely fit into forty-eight inch cup box culvert. So, I informed the Joneses, uh, because of the complaint, that the DOT was not gonna clean it. If they wanted to do it, I said Toro has a device. So, um, fall was dry, and the fall was nice, and the Joneses went with their workers, saw the African workers, and did a lot of work. A lot of work, and got three and a half of those box culverts. Spick and span. But it's a lot of work, and it's gonna be recurring, um, and they'll just have to see, so, anyway, we acted on that.
How much silt was in there?
Well, two of them were not bad, a couple, a couple inches. One was, uh, one end, it was, you know, like this here, but the fourth one, uh, was bad, two feet, um, of silt, and, uh, like a third of it, and, um, not easy workouts, not easy work, but they, they pitched in and, and took care of it, so. So, um, other than that, just ordinary stuff, we didn't wanna state that Dan Webster has served, I believe, for six years, and, uh, he is, uh, not willing to hurry up again. We've really enjoyed our time with Dan, um, so he's, we, we stated that, you know, an advert type one's gonna have to be made. There are a couple of names that I guess are interested from the western part of the county, even though you don't have to choose anyone from the western part of the county, but as a board, we would like that. Geographical. So, anything else that I should know, or any questions?
Uh, when's the closing deadline that'll be on, I mean, what, what should we expect as he means for appointment?
Well, I imagine you have a past policy, I think they're advertising December, aren't they? And you have a closing date of.
No one's.
We could do it first meeting in January.
We're feeding you anyway, so I was thinking.
For your people.
Yeah, yeah.
For the people.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Anything sooner, it could be the next day, too.
Yeah.
But, but it's your responsibility to get it added, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause his, his appointment isn't technically done until the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we get somebody before that.
You sure enjoyed Dan, he's been a valuable member, so.
Okay, so, anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Very good.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. We talked to announcements, wanna start with Mark?
Announcements. Um, there's really nothing happening, it's pretty quiet in all my portfolios.
Has the sheriff here for some reason?
He was requested, uh, and was kind of, like, asked if Steve could show up today, I don't know what he.
Okay.
Discuss the jail perhaps.
Okay, well, so you're, so you're here for a, okay. Nothing else, then, huh?
Not really, everything's been pretty quiet.
Jeff?
Well, extension's busy working on their roundup, what is that, the ninth and tenth of January, so it's coming up. Bill had another appointment to attend this morning, so he wasn't able to be here, I did talk to Steve, he's got, you know, some year-end, uh, equipment purchases that he's working on. Now, he did hire a deputy, uh, started the first of the year, and, uh, things are going good at the sheriff's department. And, uh, state's attorney, I haven't been able to contact her yet, so, I know she's been busy. Well, Steve, do you want to have anything else you wanted to throw in there?
No, we're just trying to get, uh, things purchased and get going with our, our new employees, so, uh, you know, I'm gonna meet, uh, probably next, so, to Wednesday or Thursday with Candy and Jackie to see where our budget was this year, to see what else I can allocate from this year's budget, so, uh, we'll, we'll not have to worry about next year as much. Make sure, I find out, there's a few things you miss when you have, the little things that you don't really, so, but we're getting all taken care of, it'll be, I'm still waiting on bids for, uh, for vehicles, which is working out pretty quick. The state hasn't even let out the state bid on police vehicles yet, so, we're kind of being nimble, but they're hoping to, to announce that this week, and, uh, procurement office said they'd email me with, uh, the dollar amount, so, I'll pass that along to our local people that know, how about their bids usually? I'll bring them forth, and we'll see where we go.
Okay.
Fair Board, we met last night, had our annual meeting, uh, same officers as before, uh, nothing really new to report out there, they're working on a, kind of a long-term plan for the, the fair and the grounds out there, so, what are the, the needs and, uh, the community, and the wants and the desires, and, and then how to pay for it, you know? Uh, and they're trying to put together a list of, of what they wanna to do, and then come up with grants that they can apply for, based on those, so, they'll look at grants prior to spending any money. Uh, the good thing is, we have two very conservative, uh, leaders out there with Rodney Ground and, and Richard Volk, and, and they don't let us get by with spending anything we don't have, which is really good, so. And now we have our water convention down in Bismarck starting this afternoon and running through Friday, so.
Too bad it's early afternoon.
Yeah. And weather looks a lot nicer than it was a year ago, a year ago, uh, we had a cold spring and a day, and dragged on in some really bad conditions, and we had about a half a turnout that we normally get, so hopefully this year can be a little better roads and a little better weather conditions, but December in, in North Dakota, you just never know.
Okay. Lucas?
First and foremost, there's a Home Rule Charter Committee meeting tomorrow, uh, if anybody wants to be in attendance for that, two to three, or at least that's what we have scheduled for. Of course, it's still open to the public, so if anybody wants to come and contribute or listen, be happy to have you there. With respect to Heritage Center, uh, um, last night we had a joint meeting with the Board of Chautauqua, um, and basically agreed to work together to do some programming, uh, for the community, uh, and to co-sponsor and host events, so that, you know, we figured our resources could go further together. So, that's exciting, and one of the events that we had talked about and agreed that we would find a way to bring to the community would be, um, probably, it would be a monthly activity, uh, where you would line up a couple of speakers to tell stories about the lake region. And then those stories would then be recorded and released as a free podcast for anyone who wanted to, to listen, and in that way, you're sort of creating, uh, an oral history of the heritage of the lake region as well.
Cool.
Um, so we thought that was very cool, Chautauqua thought it was very cool, uh, and so we decided we would pursue that. And then I have one more thing that I don't wanna forget, oh, um, uh, the Midwest Volunteer Program, uh, which was formerly the RSVP Program, um, is looking at partnering with Hartview and Can Do, um, to try to create a, uh, drug rehabilitation program here in, in Devil's Lake utilizing some of the funds that the state has, and that's part of, sort of spun off the initiative that Nels Nelson and a few other people at the LEC have been working on. So, what we're gonna try to do is get together a couple of key stakeholders, uh, probably later on this week, uh, to talk about what that might look like and how different agencies across the community could partner together and make it better. I think that's it.
Okay, so we're interested in the claim, yeah?
Yeah, when's the next social service meeting?
Excuse me?
When's our next meeting?
Um, Monday, the twenty-first, right? I guess it got changed, Monday, the. Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, sorry.
Eighteenth or what?
I think they moved it up.
I know, but then I think we moved it back, I should, I'll text her.
Oh, that's all right. As long as you're here, you might as well tell us about social service, and I take me out to work, so.
Oh, okay, um, well, we, um, did finalize a purchase of a new vehicle, we got a, um, a four-wheel-drive Ford Explorer, so that, that is here, and we have that available for staff. We did, um, go ahead, we had funding for a emergency, or we had not an emergency, we had funding for a driver for three years in our budget, had not been able to find anyone. We went ahead and hired someone through the HR, through an HR kind of loophole, so to speak, in an emergency, you can do seven hundred and twenty hours without going through the posting process. So, Doug Miller graciously agreed to be our part-time hourly driver, so we got him on board. We interviewed yesterday for our open position, we had a, a staff member leave after one year in the, um, child welfare unit. We did interview, and it's looking like we're gonna repost that. We also got word from one of our, um, child welfare workers that her husband has taken a job in Fargo, so we will, when they sell their house and she secures employment in Fargo, which the way, um, child welfare, human services, it won't be difficult, and we'll have another opening in January, early February, so, always changes. Attended care has been going long, we've had busy, I don't know if anyone noticed, it was a supermood, and I think it still is, so, we've had, um, some, um, well, we, we manage a lot of crises, but it's been particularly difficult the last week and a half, I would say.
Attended care?
Attended care's been busy. So, um, I, I don't, I don't think we have anything else, um.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Law enforcement, continually repairing out there, using a lot of inmates for the labor, and it's working out pretty good that way, so, showers are getting cleaned up and refurbished, and, uh, next question, maybe if we're gonna look around the block, it's, it's only the time, I guess, this actually. I think it's a toilet, was it sixteen hundred?
I don't know. For a toilet?
Then they give them in, but maybe calling anybody in jail or all the other diploma or anything, yeah, so.
You've got to advise the toilet, they're looking at, it's not just a toilet.
No, I know, yeah, it's a special thing. It's got, it doesn't have the tape on it, it's English.
Well, it also includes a sink and everything else, it's the whole unit that's, and it's also concealed, so there's no access for them to get, you know, it's more than just a, that's why the costs are.
Yeah, more than flush, huh?
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Okay, uh, from my perspective, let's see, we had social service covered, Rachel's back there for Cora Devil's Lake, so we'll have to go first.
Um, I only have a few things, just letting you guys know that my position is, uh, posted now, and is out on our website along with various others, including Job Service, um, the city's website. The city's website, um, indeed, Economic Development, Mid-America Council, um, IEDC, and the State Department of Commerce, so, hopefully we'll get some candidates there. The posting is listed, open until January thirty-first, with hopes that, um, the report back from Paul Luci will be back by then, so, and figuring out who they, what type of candidate that they need in that position. Uh, Renaissance Zone meeting was held last week, and the blocks have been narrowed down, and so now they're just gonna start working with the state in filing the appropriate paperwork that goes with that, so hopefully in the next few months, we'll have a finalized, expanded, um, block, uh, for the Renaissance Zone blocks area. Um, I went to a meeting yesterday called, uh, it's actually coming out of, uh, Washington DC. Trump is gonna be naming three regions in the United States for UAS, um, pilot programs, so, North Dakota got together and decided we probably, as individual communities, can't even get on the radar at a national level, so we decided we're gonna go as a state and fill out one application, show all the resources that we have within our state that could be beneficial for this industry, and so, had a four-hour meeting on that yesterday. Um, we'll be turning over the reins probably to John Nord with, um, the airport to fill in in the future on this, but Devil's Lake is trying to be a part of it, there's gonna be a monetary investment in it, no one knows what it's gonna be, so it's kind of hard to commit at this point, but right now, we're, we're sitting there as manpower, and, um, doing a try and, try and get involved with this. And that's all I have. Oh, I should add, we do not have a taxi in Devil's Lake, and that came too late. The airport is actually who brought it to my attention, because their midnight flight, people can't get to town. And it became kind of an issue, and it was like, what are you gonna do? So, I started working on it, then here come to find out Suzie in Tourism was working on it, so, she graciously took the lead on it, and we actually now have Lyft, if, I'm sure many people have heard of Loop Uber in, in bigger cities. Um, Lyft is the same kind of thing, it's a ride-share, um, company program, people can go and fill out an application, they work as much as they want, or as little as they want, and give rides to people. Um, it's all done electronically through an app on your phone, you request a ride, they, um, will accept it, if they wanna come pick you up, they'll get the dollar amount and the cost, and then you accept the charges, and it's all charged through your credit card or your debit card, whatever's in there. Um, so Lyft is active now in Devil's Lake, so we do have that, and we've hung up a sign in the airport and things like that, so, just gotta get the, the word out there and get more people to apply to be drivers, thinking it'd be good for, especially like college students, things like, people like that, that would like a little bit of extra income, but don't have the ability maybe to commit to a, a schedule, um, like a regular business, so.
But there's no taxi?
No taxi, we had four, and then they, like, fought amongst, much amongst themselves up there.
That, that was the reason for my emergency position, transportation is absolutely horrid.
So, now we got Lyft, but as far as I know, we have two drivers that are approved, one driver has their application in the queue, so we just need several others, so. Yeah.
For this Lyft, so you gotta get approved by the city?
Lyft, no, it's L-Y-F-T.
By the company?
Um, actually, under Century Code, we found this out, that the city's ordinance is actually, uh, against the law, because they have stated in their, like, Uber or ride-share, any sort of, those companies have to follow the taxi rules and regulations, meaning they have to come into the city, provide their insurance, do all these qualifications. They don't have to do that, so, according to Century Code, um, they are already approved, there's nothing the community can do, they come in, and they are, um, approved as the state of North Dakota has approved them.
And they're approved through their company, through Uber?
Yeah, so they're hired, so Lyft and Uber must have, uh, an agreement or something in respect with North Dakota where they provide the information to them, um, but, no, they're, or their standards are accepted, that what they're accepting for their drivers is appropriate, so. Uh, it, it kind of makes sense, I mean, someone that's gonna be maybe doing five rides a, like, week or a month or what have you, why would they wanna carry taxi insurance, it's significant cost to them, so. There's, there's a difference, ordinance or a different regulation in the Century Code for them, so.
Sounds like quite a sideline.
Yeah, if you want a lot of extra business, start picking up some rides.
Uh, let's see, is that it, Rachel?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, uh, yeah, in, in addition to that, when, uh... Yeah, and in addition to that, when, well, you had the meeting to post the job, we're working on hopefully finding somebody to kind of help out in the interim just so we can, you know, make sure we get all the meetings covered and everything like that. I don't know how that's going so far. I haven't talked to Bernard, he was going to work on it.
It didn't work out.
Didn't work out, okay. So we'll probably go back to the drawing board. But we made a determination as a board that we probably would be better off, as Rachel said, holding off on hiring someone. And so we got the strategic vision and everything all done. So that way, you know, we can kind of work whoever we're hiring into that plan so that, you know, we can kind of start a ration. So we'll see how that works. Let's see. Social services have been covered, Cora Devil's Lake's been covered. County Housing Authority, I didn't get to last month because I actually scheduled it the same time I was here. I haven't been there in like three months, so. We're going to make it next week. Two additional things that aren't technically part of my portfolio. But I sit on the County Crop Improvement Association Board, just announced. Been saying there's going to be a couple of seed releases in the county for next year. One Minnesota variety, we called Lang and then a... NDSU's first glyphosate tolerant bean is coming out next year as well. So if there's any growers out there that are interested, if you were, I'll talk to Bill about it to get signed up if you're interested in growing either of those. It's going to be limited numbers in terms of release, but it's going to be out there, so that's an option. And then the only other thing I was going to state is, we talked a little bit about the extension funding at the last meeting, and it's not something we're going to have to deal with until we budget for 19, but just to get it on our radar home. Right now, what they're proposing is we're on a 50-50 cost share on the salaries, correct, on, on both of our agents that we have currently. And it's sal, just salaries is we're on a 50-50 cost share, and then we cover the office cost. What they're proposing is going to a 60-40 split, where it sounds like that's not a bad thing, but 60-40 split is 60-40 on all costs. So retirement, payroll benefits, the whole works, insurance. Where we would cover the 40, they would cover the 60. But if you look at it in their Panda or their PowerPoint, salaries on their 50% side is, or total salaries of extension is something like 2.7 million, and the benefits are an additional almost 2 million. So it's going to cost, they're projecting it's going to be about a 5% increase in cost for the counties. The one thing I have a question on, and I haven't talked to anybody about it yet, it's expressed, the states in the PowerPoint said they're only going to cover one agent. Per county. So then we're going to have to make, and then we'll have to determine what the situation's going to be there. That's where a lot of additional cost could be borne by us, keeping the second position, I believe. I'm not totally certain of that yet, but it said, that's what it said in the PowerPoint. So I don't know if they're going to work with us on it, what situation it's going to be. Is there not agents out there, or you mean, does anybody know to fill all the positions in the county? I don't know. I would guess all the western part of the state, they probably have a little bit harder time finding people to fill them. And I think, I think that's partially where they're going with it, is there's going to be some county combination, I would guess, in certain situations. But I think that would happen with retirements and stuff anyway.
Bill did say that he's going to get his district manager to come in and talk to us during one of our commission meetings, try to explain all this a little better and give us a better understanding of what to expect for 2019, I think is, is when it's going to be, and so we'll have to start budgeting for, you know, come July or whatever. But, you know, and one of the things that was brought up, if they, if they combine counties and a county doesn't have an active agent in it, does NDSU lose its land grant status as a land grant university? Because that was one of the stipulations within that land grant university. Deal was that they'd have a county agent representation within each county.
That's in Century Code?
Well, that, that's...
That's a federal law, they established land grant colleges. That's what the neighbor was.
The land grant colleges, so.
Like the 1870s or whatever it was.
So, you know, it's one of those things that it's been probably overlooked when they're looking at cutting agents throughout the counties or combining responsibilities and duties or combining counties and that.
Yeah, if they combine, I suppose they, in their eye, they would consider their furnishing an agent.
Right.
If it's two counties or three counties, they're still furnishing an agent, so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
No, but I just figured I'd bring it up to itself. It's going to be on the radar. It's going to cost us more money regardless. It's just a matter of, you know, one agent versus two agent. And it'll be just interesting to see how it plays out, too, something to keep on our radar going forward, so. I think that's all I have at this point.
One last thing is the Planning, the zoning commission. Planning Commission, their, his meeting, 14th of December, 9 o'clock downstairs, review the comprehensive plan that KLG has been working on with us. We have a draft plan in place. Lucas and myself are on that committee, but it's open to the public. If any of the other commissioners would like to attend, or any of the public would like to attend, we should have our draft document then, we'll review it. Have any suggested changes that we want to bring back as far as the planning commission? And then we'll have a public hearing, probably sometime in January for that, for the revised edition that the planning commission had come up with. And then once that public hearing is committed or completed, then we can bring the final document to the commission for approval.
You can, the commission going to see the document for the public hearing?
Yes.
We will see.
And if you'd like, we can get you a copy today. You know, Candy's got electronically, she'll print off. I know some members of the planning committee asked for a printed copy, we mailed one. It's a pretty big file.
They'll be gone, so.
So, did you give us one at the last meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, you just had one for yourself.
I, 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 I had one.
I was trying to remember what this.
If you'd like, you can email it to you.
Yeah, I don't want to waste a tree.
Yeah, it's a big document. I think one of the...
How many pages?
Ninety-four.
Really? I'd get two nights at that right now.
Night timer either. Which I bet.
Don't take me long, it's past noon, but I don't know.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything further?
Leave out the three hundred pages.
See, nothing, I'd entertain a motion order.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a second.
Your turn.